The common council to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, God, in the eyes of all.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the approval of the August 13th and the special meeting of August 22nd minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of August 13th and August 22nd.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August 13th, 2019, and the special council meeting August 22nd, 2019. Are there any corrections to those minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have authorization to pay bills. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move we pay bills in the amount of $1,118,725.99.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pay the bills in the amount of $1,118,725.99. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried unanimously. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to have public comment tonight? Address the council on any issue. Okay, if not, we'll move right along to standing and special committees. First of all, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
All right. Board of Public Works met on August 22nd, 2019, 4:30. Meeting called to order at 4:32. First thing was discuss some possible action on agreement with McMahon and Associates for preliminary street survey and grant writing services. An agreement was presented and the committee discussed hiring McMahon and Associates to determine probable costs and to assist writing an STP urban grant for the future Northwater and Pearl Street reconstruction projects. The grant is due on October 15th and expected divorce to come out in February 2020. Motion made and seconded to bring that to council. That was brought to the council meeting that night. The cost of that was amount of $8,100 for probable costs and grant writing services for Northwater and Pearl Street reconstruction. No further business. The meeting was adjourned at 4:30. The next meeting was September 3rd. That meeting was called to order at 4:30. The first item was wastewater treatment plant. There was no questions or concerns. The next item brought up was a presentation for ATV/UTV routes in the city of New London by Northeast and Central Wisconsin ATV/UTV Association. Gene Goody, President of the Northeast and Central Wisconsin ATV/UTV, provided a presentation and a sample ordinance to the board regarding the possible adoption of ATV/UTV routes and trails within the city of New London. No motion was taken on this. The next item was review and discussion of the 2020 draft Public Works Park and Recreation Facilities budget. Mr. Hirth presented a review and led a discussion of the draft of the 2020 department budget. No motion or changes were made on the budget at this time. The next was to discuss and act on 2020 part-time seasonal wage schedule. A draft of 2020 part-time seasonal staff wage schedule was presented and discussed. No changes to the present schedule were made. Motion made and seconded to consider approval of the 2020 part-time seasonal staff wage schedule presented. Motion carried by all. The next item was director's report. Years of service. Michelle Lamrick, Public Services Administrator, completed two years of service on August 14. Other matters, none were identified. Next month's agenda was the possible discussion on ATV/UTV routes in the city of New London and also the 2020 capital budget. We're waiting for further information from the state on ATV/UTV routes. No further business. Motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting minute, excuse me, meeting adjourned at 5:55. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Next, we move on to finance and personnel. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee held a special meeting on Thursday, August 22nd at 4:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Finance Director Ratke presented a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. The purpose of this resolution is to allow the city to pay for the engineers' preliminary numbers for the downtown street project from a future anticipated borrowing so the city can apply for state grant funding. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Zog to recommend the resolution to City Council. Motion carried 9-0. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at 4:30 p.m. Then, the Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, September 4th at 4:30 p.m. in the council chambers. The 2020 budget is scheduled for October 16th at 4:30 in the council chambers. City Administrator Leone presented a resolution supporting a creation of a TIF district for the Downtown Development Library Development Project. Motion was made by Zog, seconded by Fache, to recommend the resolution to City Council. Motion carried 8-0. Finance Director Ratke reviewed the July financial reports. The Administrator's report and the Finance Director's report were discussed. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at 4:58 p.m. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on October 2nd at 4:30 p.m. Then I move we approve a resolution to support the Downtown Development Library Project by creating a TID district.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to support the Downtown Development Library Project by creating a TID district. Is there any discussion on that item? All, please cast your ballots. All voting aye, motion carried.
May I move we approve the license list for September as presented?
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the license list as presented. Are there any questions or comments on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, thank you, Mr. Morak. Next, we move to Park and Recreation. Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Park and Recreation Committee met September 3rd at 5:15. Meeting was called order at 5:15. Alderman Steinhorst moved to approve the agenda, seconded by Alderman Zog. Motion carried by all. Director's memo and report, there is none identified. Public comment relevant items on the agenda, there is none present. And reviewed and discussed of the 2020 draft Public Works and Park Recreation Facilities budget. Mr. Hirth presented a review and led a discussion on the draft 2020 department budget. No motion or changes were made on the draft budget at this time. Discuss and act on the 2020 part-time seasonal wage schedule. A draft of the 2020 part-time seasonal staff wage schedule was presented and discussed. No changes to the present schedule were proposed. Alderman Herter moved and seconded by Alderman Zog. The council consider approval of the 2020 part-time seasonable staff wage schedule as presented. Motion was carried by all. Draft of the, oh, excuse me. Consider to approve the 2020 park and recreational fee schedule. A draft of 2020 park and recreational fee schedule was also provided. No changes to the schedule were made at this time. Alderman Steinhorst moved and seconded by Alderman Fache to council consider for approval of the draft 2020 parks and recreational fee schedule. Motion carried by all. Director's report. Michelle Lamrick, Public Service Administrator, completed two years of service for the city on August 4th. Chairman's report, there is none identified. Committee members' report, there is none identified. Next month's agenda would be the 2020 capital budget. Alderman Fache moved to adjourn, seconded by Herter. Adjourned at, meeting moved, adjourned at 6 o'clock and motion was carried by all. I would ask the council to consider approving the 2020 parks and recreational fee schedule.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the 2020 draft of the part-time seasonal wage schedule. Are there any comments or questions on that? Please cast your ballots. All voting aye, motion carried unanimously.
All I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Next, we have Planning Commission. Mr. Steinhorst, I understand you did not have a meeting in August.
We had no meeting, so I have no report.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Economic Development. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, August 27th at 4:30 p.m. in New London City Council Chambers. The June 25th minutes were approved. Scott Black, District Administrator, New London School District, introduced himself and spoke about his plans to keep the school district going forward. Ann Hunt introduced Lori Van Astine, who is working on promoting the new library project. Lori spoke about fundraising for the library and the need for the city to engage in the effort in order to dispel hesitancy by the public. Ideas were discussed to raise public awareness for the project. Flyers and utility bills and stuffers and grocery bags were discussed. A resolution by the council to create a TIF district was discussed. Motion made by Zog and seconded by Fache to have a resolution for a TIF district go to the next finance meeting. Motion carried unanimously. Was also suggested that a representative from SEH be invited to the next meeting. Tom McHugh, developer, was present to speak about his interest to develop affordable housing in the city. He spoke about incentive programs being used in the Fox Valley to assist developers in creating housing at more affordable selling price. He is looking at a parcel in the city which would allow for 26 potentially new builds and asked the group to look into how they could work together on a mutually beneficial program. City Administrator Lou Leone explained the program as one that recruits business on a national level. The cost for his first year is reduced substantially, coming at $9,500. This is a measurable ROI product, according to Leone. Motion by Zog and seconded by Fache to recommend to council approval. And it carried unanimously. April Kapitsky told about her welcome to New London business efforts. She stated there is an interest in some incentives for new business. The most asked questions are about tax credits. The question of rented building versus own was discussed in regards to property tax credits. Lou was asked to look into what the Fox Cities does for these incentives. The community's 2019 goals will be reviewed next month. The proposed 2020 budget was reviewed and will be viewed again next year for any items that could be discontinued for more results based expenditures. April updated the group on four business changes, including kiss candies and ice cream, which is new, MK flooring, which is new, Mallet travel, which relocated, and quality in, which remodeled. Invitation of a rep from SEH was discussed, possibly combining with the next finance meeting if possible. Also discussed was inviting local realtors to the meetings to get their input on home buyers' interests with regards to the city. Scott Black reminded the group that school starts on September 3rd and to please be mindful of students and buses. And the meeting adjourned at 6:10 p.m. Then I would move that we approve a one-year proposal to WEDA for a cost of $9,500.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the one-year proposal to WEDA for, at a cost of $9,500. Any questions or comments on that item? Please cast your ballots.
You gotta hit yes first, yes or no.
Okay, if not, we'll start on reports of officers. First of all, I have just one thing tonight. Some of you may have received a card in the mail concerning the Highway 15 Improvement Project. And on Tuesday, September 24th, the Department of Transit, Wisconsin Department of Transportation, is going to be having a meeting from 5 until 7 o'clock at the Hortonville High School Commons in Hortonville to provide project update and the current project schedule. It's an open house format and they will have a brief presentation at 5:15. And that is open to the public. And I would encourage anybody that's been interested or waiting for whatever to attend that meeting over in Hortonville on the 24th of September. It's also been posted on the city's Facebook page. If anybody has a question about it, they can call City Clerk's Office at City Hall. She has the information, correct?
Correct.
And for any further information on that. So getting kind of excited about Highway 15 again should be great for the city of New London and the area and good to see the project finally moving, looks like it's moving forward quickly. That's all I have for tonight. Next, we have City Administrator, Mr. Leone.
Just some updates regarding the old city landfill. We have received results and looked it over. There's nothing significant to report. But we did also have a long conversation regarding what to do with the two farthest downstream sample sites and we will be proceeding with getting quotes on filing a formal request in order to remove them. So far, we've had consistent testing to show that they're not needed. So that's just something we can cut out from the process.
Good.
I continue to meet with members of the community and business leaders and encourage people to stop into the council or stop into the city office to talk to me about the city. Let me know the highs and lows, what you feel. This way, I can proceed to make plans that will help the city progress. We're looking to host a brat fry on September 23rd to show appreciation for all the hard work that city staff members did during the July storm. Right now, after Paul's retiring, our building inspector retired, we don't have an emergency manager or an ADA administrator. And I have volunteered to fill both of those roles so that we can keep up with things. We are still working on the emergency operations plans. Let's see. I have completed now, as of this week, reaching out to each of the staff members to, as I mentioned before, getting their highs and lows and finding ways that we can make the city administration move more efficiently. And I have met with all of the aldermen except for three so far. No pressure, but I'd like to sit down with each of you soon. I mentioned before, I did sit down with the board, sorry, I did attend the meetings for Mukwa and Liberty to introduce myself and also to open the lines of communication. Something that's coming up is the 2020 census, which will be officially taking place on April 1st, 2020. It's important to participate in the census as the data collected helps to determine federal funding. As a case in point, the data that collected in the 2010 census resulted in a decrease in representation for Illinois, Michigan, and Minnesota, which is three of our neighbors, and a loss of $1,091 in federal grant dollars for each person missed. So I encourage citizens, as we get closer to the census taking, to please fill out the forms so that we can get as much representation for our region as possible. I've been continuing talking with and meeting with the various economic development agencies throughout the region. And I wanted to put a thanks out to April with the Chamber of Commerce. She actually made a request and the Chamber of Commerce and the city will be working next year on a Midnight Bazaar. This is an event that happens three times a year. It's been going on for the last three years that Fox Cities Economic Development has been putting on. They, it's almost like a Lollapalooza, a concert that's put on with various bands. If it comes to your area like New London, we encourage all of the local businesses to show representation, maybe open their store hours a little later as well. The average attendance has been about 10,000 people. So this will be a good boost for our local economy. Let's see. Wopaka Economic Development Council, I'm happy to report that I was named the vice chairman. In addition to all these various projects, I've scheduled a meeting, actually it's scheduled for tomorrow, to discuss the Library Riverfront Development Project. This is to bring everybody together so we can go over what is expected, get the due dates set, get the final dollar amounts in place so that we can share the information out with the public a little bit better. And finally, two things I wanted to bring up was Code Red. Code Red is an emergency notification service that allows emergency officials to notify residents and businesses by telephone, cellphone, text message, email, and social media regarding time-sensitive general and emergency notifications. Only authorized officials have access to the Code Red system. I'm urging everyone in the New London area to please go to the New London Police Department website for more information and how to enroll in the Code Red application. This is something that we realized during the July storm. More people, if they sign up, we have the sirens out there, but people have a tendency to ignore the sirens. And the sirens are actually meant more to notify people that are outdoors, that there's a potential hazard going on. This, we can be able to contact people more directly to say what's going on, give them information like no parking downtown while city equipment's moving through. So that's something else. And then regarding that storm, I also wanted to report to everyone that the state disaster declaration was approved by FEMA. We are now shifting over to the next process of meeting with FEMA and determining the next steps as far as making sure the forms are filled out properly, what the final dollar amounts are, including what has happened since we originally filed. So just so everyone is aware, what typically happens is when a storm event happens, the city has to declare emergency, then the county, that asks the county for help. If it's too much for the county to help out with, the county has to declare an emergency and then that gets it pushed up to the state. When the state can't, or needs extra resources or assistance, then they push it up to FEMA. So that's typically how it goes. So even though the storm happened July 20th, it is just in this last week that FEMA approved the declaration. And that's all I have to report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Lowaters, our city attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city administrator had asked me for an opinion as to whether ex-official members of the council could make a motion at committee meetings. And I'll preface my answer by saying, if I had to listen to somebody scratching their nails on a chalkboard or read Robert's Rules, I would choose the former. Having said that, I had no choice but to try and wade through Robert's Rules, which I did. And so I came up to the conclusion that at this point, there can't be motions made by ex-official members in committee. And if that council wanted to change that or could amend their ordinance that allows members to, ex-official members to vote, you could add that to it. But at this point in time, I don't think that that's allowed. So that was my conclusion. And it was a great experience to try to read through Robert's Rules. And if you haven't had that experience, I encourage you to take a look and you'll know what I mean.
And if anybody would like to borrow the book, we have one here. It's in fine print, not, this is not a large print book. Thank you, Mr. Lowaters. Appreciate that. Next, we have our utility manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to report the water department's been quite busy. They've been prepping for construction on your Cedar and Northridge Street projects. They had it all prepped and as they did the shaping of the roads, they did enough damage that we actually had to go back and reprep and found some bad bolts. So on a caution, they went through and jugged up every valve to make sure they were correct. Got that project done and you were able to get your road paved last weekend. Then, in the middle of, after all that, they were in the middle of valve exercising. And the way it looks, they should be finishing that section of town later this week and then they'll probably have 20, 25 valves go back and re-exercise to make sure they work properly. Then following that, next thing coming up for us in early October will be the hydrant flushing. So they've been quite active. And the thing I have to congratulate my water department on the most is they were able to do the AMI meter stuff. We're down to, there was over 2,900 meters, we're down to 22. And they're all larger diameter meters, two, three, and four inch meters. It costs a little bit more, a little bit more involved, but our residential meters have been completed both electrically and water. So that's very nice. Way ahead of my anticipated schedules. That's gone well. We're working on our southeast substation project. We have pulled in all the circuits but one. We have terminations to make on several of the 4160 circuits and control wiring to put in and a breaker is being shipped out later this month. Once those things are done, I'm hoping by mid-October, we'll be ready to do the conversion. The only people that will really affect in that is Tyson. And we'll have an outage with them planned where we have to cut the six wires that go into their main feed and re-terminate them into a cabinet and phase them all and so on and so forth. So that project should be done in mid-October, which is coming along nicely. We also have gone through the July 20th storm completely through the city. Mike Fredericks has done that. We have a nice punch list of minor repairs to do and that'll be fielding work for us the rest of the year. So that's where we stand right now, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, recreation side. Registration kicked off this week with our fall lineup of programs, gymnastics, tumbling, and dance classes, our next session of adult fitness classes, and Women's Fall Volleyball League. All those programs start in October, but registration is now. So if you're interested in those programs, now is the time to get online or come down in the office. You can also still register for the Glow Run, which is scheduled for Friday, September 13th, starting at 8 o'clock p.m. at Hatton Park. That's this Friday. Registration will close at noon on Friday, but you can still, up to that time, sign up in the office, the parking rec office, or at the New London Aquatics and Fitness Center for that event. Like Steve was talking about, street construction, our projects are kind of picking up right now at the tail end of the summer. The contractor has installed the lower level of asphalt on Cedar and Northridge. We anticipate that the concrete contractor is finally coming in and they will be probably this week, starting the concrete work, weather depending. I know Mother Nature hasn't been nice in the last couple of days. But hopefully that concrete contractor can get in and do their work. Once that's done, then the top layer of asphalt will be put on that project and we can button that up. Also on Clot Road, Clot Road has been pulverized in the area that we have that utility extension for the new sub-development west of the high school. There also, the town of Mukwa also has a road construction project in the area too. So they're trying to, you know, work on those schedules together with each other. But if all goes well, the other Mukwa project can get done and then we can also get Clot Road. And then we can also get Clot Road paved in that same area, hopefully by the end of this week, if all goes well. Fall leaf brush pickup schedule has been published, so October's right around the corner. And leaves are gonna probably start falling sooner than later. But we've got our schedule set up for leaf and brush pickup. That's going to start October fourteenth. However, we ask that people do not start putting leaves into the curb until that weekend, starting Saturday, October eleventh. As like Steve was talking, they have hydrant flushing ahead of that. So we don't want people putting a bunch of leaves into the curb lines and then the utilities flushing the hydrants. And then we're having all that leaves and debris flow into the catch basins and plug up the catch basin. So we ask that people please keep the leaves on top of the curb until Saturday, October eleventh. Then starting on that date, that weekend, you can then push it in the curb. And as of the fourteenth, we'll start making our rounds. But if you want to see better schedules for what zone your area is in, just check us out online on our website or our Facebook page. Thank you.
And one continued problem that we always see is people bringing their animals down there. It's a violation of our city ordinance. Service animals are welcome, support animals are not. So please leave your animals at home unless you need them there. And hopefully, we don't have any issues. Thank you much.
Thank you. And finally, our fire chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of service anniversaries from July. I missed a July meeting. Don Conant, forty-one years. Dave Stibbs, ten. And from August, Brandon Whittig, seven years. Kale Wilfer, three years. And Tyler Gayet, three years. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before council tonight? Moved to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.